I got four o'clock, let's get started, folks, let's pledge please.
Are you live?
Are you ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, thanks for all the counsel. Dan will not be here today, he's out of town on business. We have minutes for, make sure people are gonna table those, and we have payroll, about a hundred eighty-six thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars and six cents. That's what I've got to do over there. You can get that handy stuff.
Laura, it's starting to rain, and I think your windows are down.
Okay.
This is gonna cost.
They done it.
Yeah. What card, what card is that?
Black, yeah.
Black, hand check.
I got it.
The course.
Jake, Eddie was here, he comes up after work.
Ah.
Go to work.
That's it. Okay.
Heather came back in to let us know.
So we all make a motion to do payroll, a hundred eighty-six thousand four fifty-two cents.
Alright, I would second that, all fair say hi. My, uh, my head's not too shiny for your camera, is it? Are you okay with a blind eye or anything?
Oh.
I work my ass, I need to do it for ya.
I got it.
Alright, next we have, we need our knowledge received payroll claims accounts payable report in the amount of fifty-three thousand five hundred sixty-five dollars and thirty-one cents. Can I make that motion?
I'll second that.
We'll second to acknowledge receipt of payroll claims payable report, all fair say hi. Okay, you have hand check, Chris?
Yes, I've got, um, two hand type, three hand type checks, they're all for Association of Indiana Counties. And they all have to do with Indiana County stakehold meeting for the council.
Okay, council.
And that meeting's gonna take place this Saturday.
Okay, so that's usually Saturday.
Is there an amount, no, is there?
Um, one's for sixty dollars, and that is for the budget class that I'll be taking.
Okay.
The other one's for a hundred and sixty dollars, that's for four councilmen.
Okay.
And then forty dollars for myself. The first sixty dollars is for the class on the twenty-fifth, the hundred and sixty dollars and the forty dollar one, that's for the AIC council meeting on Saturday and the twenty-sixth.
Well, I make the motion, we approve out a cycle checks to AIC in the amount of sixty dollars, a hundred and sixty dollars, and forty dollars for the state hall meeting.
Second that.
All fair say hi. Okay. Any other new business?
Hi there.
Oh, sorry I'm late.
Oh man, we were just talking, right?
All good things, right?
Well, we tried to discuss.
It's time to keep trying to wait for the lady to quit.
Oh, the rain just parts for me.
Oh man. Glad I got my old boots on. Is there anything you'd do? Yes, I do have. I was contacted by a lady with a group called Galo, religious group, and they would like to have courthouse square, um, a moment for, I think prayer, and it would be June twenty-six, July twenty-fourth, and August twenty-first. They don't have any requirements much other than they will put up a pop-up pen, and they said they would meet with Randy, as well, because those, I don't want to worry about the sprinkling, and then they would also provide a certificate of insurance.
And what was the date, Ken?
Six twenty-six, seven twenty-four, and eight twenty-one.
Thank you.
So I make a motion, we approve that?
I second that.
All fair say hi. Okay. Also, I had a volunteer added to our volunteer list with our insurance called Carter, with a gentleman, his name is Lee Creed, and we just recently appointed him to the cemetery ward, and we will be having, getting a get-together with the cemetery ward, see if we need to reorganize, what we need to do, if they wanna get active with that, and I appreciate those folks. He also has volunteered, and has in the past worked on pop rules, kinda like I have, a little bit of wagon film, he's working on a bridge for us right at the moment, just volunteered, willing to do that this time, and his wagon's slightly, and so I called, had him add to the volunteer list, and his name is Lee Creed, so I would make the motion that we approve adding Lee Creed to our volunteer list of workers.
And I'll second that.
All fair say hi. Okay, and that's all I have. You got any new business?
I do know.
Okay. Matt, looks like you're up. Just so you folks understand, this Matt Stackley, Matt Stackley's with his own group, his corps is his business, and we hired him to, he goes into a facility, like courthouse or the jail, or whatever you may have, and he does an analysis of your HVAC systems and your, all your mechanicals, he will write up a systems report, and a schedule on what needs to be done for maintenance, what should be done for maintenance, he writes down all the people that are responsible as far as companies and all that information, and so that's what he's in the process now of putting together for us. We wanna have one together, particularly for the courthouse, that I suspect that Don will be retiring within a year or so, and Don's been there long enough that he pretty well knows this, but when Don came in, it was just cold turkey, the prior custodian just walked out the door, as he should. I'm not blaming anybody, but this is how it was, walked out the door, and Don had no education on this, he's learned as he goes, and Don's done an excellent job. It's required, of course, a lot, hired a lot of outside consultants, the folks are gonna be in work on stuff that maybe might not be the case if we had these documents in our hands, how to do this, and some preventative stuff, so when Don does go, we wanna make sure we have something in hand to give to the new person coming in to do that job, and that's what Matt Stackley's creating, so Matt, welcome, glad you're here, thanks, what you got for us?
Yeah, I was actually talking with Don today, following up with him, he was telling me how he was handed the courthouse and the caring.
Just empty, yeah.
And I said, earlier in my career, when I was still on the tool craft side, I used to do what Don did, but I was handed about eighty pounds of keys for two high-rises. See ya. So I said, Don, imagine when you were up with a single bill, I had two, two high-rises of good luck, so yeah, I get it. So yeah, actually, again, I don't take it lightly, and I'm glad to state it publicly, that I've been doing facilities management and consulting for twenty years, three of those years on my own with core facilities. I'm a very niche firm, there's really no one doing what I'm doing, and I sincerely thank you guys as accounting for your business, it goes a very long way, and my clients are all I have, and my name is what I have, so I've done backflips for you guys, you guys have contracted with me to put something together for the courthouse, as well as the sheriff's office jail, so in addition to the actual maintenance programs, these serve both as a few tools, one for anyone incoming, or even anyone existent, such as John over at the sheriff's office, everyone's capabilities are different, you know, some people call a janitor a facilities director, and other people call a facilities manager a custodian, the title within maintenance is thrown all over the place, but everyone's skill sets are different, so this serves as a tool for them in some areas, to bring them or increase their capabilities. When someone new comes in, instead of taking six months or a year to learn the building, they right off the bat know, I have five return fans, I have twelve exhaust fans, they each serve these quadrants, I have these air handlers, this is the main instance to be done on those. The generator runs once a week on Wednesday at 5:00 a.m., under load for fifteen minutes, or we run it twice a week, the engine only, and once a month under load, everyone does it different, but you're able to come in, I compile all this, there's a lot of research and due diligence and walkthroughs, and probably a thousand photos to get to this point, so yours are done, I gave John this morning his program, I gave Don his program, so they each have a copy, I have, per the agreement, there's two copies of each building, and then I, as a bonus for the commissioners, which you guys could do whatever you want with the individual, I actually compiled both the courthouse and the jail into a single copy for you guys. So in addition to the maintenance programs, you guys also contracted with my firm to do three years of inspection reports, so we are paid for three years on the platform, John and Don are successfully uploaded on their phones with that application, we downloaded it from the Google Play Store and Apple Store, emails are in, passwords are in, I walked through it, literally, how to use it, what's expected, basically what I do with that inspection report is you guys did it the right way by taking this program further, so it's one thing to have the documentation, who's the vendor for this, who do we call, how does this work, what does it serve, there's a whole other portion of it, how do we know it's actually getting done? So that's where the core inspect comes through, so your jail and courthouse maintenance guys will be monthly filling out this inspection form, and it's this customized into an inspection form, it's just as this is custom and built, so are the templates for those buildings, they could add notes, contractor was on site and replaced this, I ordered belts, I had to change four light bulbs, right there on the spot, they could take pictures if they see something broke before and after, I mean, you're, you guys as a board of commissioners, and though you guys know this, that you're actually in charge of the assets, everyone thinks the sheriff's in charge of the jail, and he's not, it's the commissioners, so you guys really taking this a step notch, and being responsible for these assets, both fiscally and in terms of decisions, you guys are now making sure that the maintenance is getting done.
Will you get notifications of maintenance or not getting them?
Alright, so, that's a good point, so I thoroughly showed them how I have clients, this is like a gym membership, right, if you sign up for a gym membership for a year, the gym owner doesn't care if you come or not, you have your FOB, or when you come, I don't care if you never show up, you're paying monthly, right, and you're not getting out of it, so I'm not that ruthless, but it's kinda the same thing, we are paid for three years, your maintenance people report to you, not to me, I am a contractor, they're not my employees, I go a step above and beyond, you guys will get the reports monthly, so when I get them, I actually get a PDF with extra analytics and data that it compiles very nicely, you will get that, I'll see the raw inspection reports that they did, and that will, this program naturally dial, you know, daisies it up, makes it a little prettier, you guys will get that. In months where it's half done or half come, I'll usually give you a one paragraph of the past month, if they're not doing it, I will at least let you know, no inspections, so the maintenance people don't know, I know this is public, I actually see when they start, when they even open it, if they even go to open this, I know they opened it, a lot of them will sit at their desk, they don't really realize it, they'll sit at their desk, and it's like, duh, 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 and then they submit it for the month, and there's no notes, so there's a roof inspection, right, when you're on a roof, naturally with your phone filling it out, you think you snap a couple photos, well, there's no notes, there's no photos, and not realizing I have the analytics, you just maintain that entire building in thirty-seven seconds. So yes, I have data that I could provide, I don't babysit, I will be proactive in letting you know, but the, I let both John and Don know, and Don and I talked about his replacement down the road, this is only as good as the data that's input, I mean, you run through duh, 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 the output is gonna be the same, the more notes, the more, when was the contractor here, what did he do, take some pictures, the more time they put into it, and they got a month, so it's literally ten minutes here, fifteen, this isn't, this is not overwhelming to them, so they're set up, yes, I will keep you posted and informed of that. Yeah, so this also, I know you guys kinda, and the council, if you remember, I met with the council as well to get appro, you guys get approval from a fiscal standpoint, the council tasked me with, hey, we're not looking for a robust capital plan, but you're gonna be in these buildings, let us know, so this may be another discussion, but you know, your courthouse was completely renovated in two thousand, two thousand and one, and the sheriff's office is from ninety-eight, so regarding the courthouse, I would definitely want to discuss with you guys, I do a lot of requests for proposal services, I get far better pricing than counties when they go out and do it, in fact, I just saved Jay County about a hundred and forty grand, but neither here nor there, naturally, I'll, I do this work project administration, but the fire enunciator system, you guys have one of the, I'm in a lot of courthouses, I'm in a lot of jails, you guys in Park County have one of the nicest courthouses that I've seen, there's some nice ones out there, your guys' courthouse is grand, and it's really old, so you guys have a fire enunciator system that's relying on batteries and repeaters, when some, you have no fire suppression, which is okay, but at least your fire enunciator, and when something goes into alarm, it goes right to Don's phone, so if there's an actual fire, it's going to Don's phone, Don has to go into the building manually to pull up the code, to see even what device that it, and I was in the attic in the basement, and there's a lot of paper, your wood is from the eighteen hundreds in that attic, I mean, I'm, fire enunciators, horns, strobes, poles, heat detectors, smokes, duct detectors, that's not attractive, no one wants to spend money towards that, we want money towards generators, IT servers, HVAC, fire enunciators is not glamorous or sexy for lack of a better word, but with a building that you guys have, I mean, I would do backflips to try and convince you, like, you really ought to look into this, at least get some numbers. The other is your elevator, so you guys had updated the actual drive and controls for the elevator, but the actual motor itself is one of the oldest I've ever seen, Don agreed, there's not even a year on it, it's gotta be sixty, seventies, they don't make parts for it, so the other thing definitely to think about regarding the courthouse is, would be to upgrade, or at least plan, and I can go before the council, but definitely plan with the fire enunciator and an elevator, other than that, your courthouse is really grand and really awesome, the sheriff's office, so, couple things, again, more on the council side, you're, you guys upgraded for the touchscreen with SAS regarding the door controls and intercoms, the actual field devices are original, and John's starting to replace those, and half the doors he can't get parts, so full replacement kits to actually bring all of your heavy jail doors, that is really specialized, I've got a cost for you guys to retrofit, John can do them, couple screws and you put the whole thing on, but the cost, and I would wanna get involved and try and leverage that, hey, we're buying seventy of them.
And the important part is, for people to understand, is you're not selling these, you're not selling them, you're gonna direct us, you're like, we manage these things, so I understand, that's why I appreciate it.
Yeah, oh yeah.
That's why I got hired, yeah.
Yeah, to wrap up, your guys' main air handlers, which are Resner furnaces, are original from, from the build, most of the air-cooled condensers at the jail have been replaced outside of three, these seven Resners are original, so it's definitely not something like, the fire enunciator's like now, the elevator, probably next five years, but these Resners are definitely something you, you could do piece, piece by piece, you have seven of them, or you could just plan for seven years, now we're doing them all, but definitely something to put on your guys' radar. The parking lot's pretty beat up, but I'm sure asphalt contractors are a dime a dozen or higher, but the parking lot's like beyond seal coat, it's pretty bad. John actually wants to go for training out to San Jose, California, for these actual, the actual manufacture of these locks, I know Brink's does security center locks as well, and they're out of Wisconsin, I've actually sent some of my team members from the past up for like a two, two or three day intensive, it's like a thousand bucks, you put them up in a hotel, but it's like three, eight, ten hour days of lock making and rebuilding them, so you're not relying on outside contractors, which jail, security center locks, there used to be ten, we're down to two, and they know there's only two, and they know there's no competition, so yeah, what price you get, good luck shopping it out, so that might actually be a really good investment, John looked into it, it's out of San Jose or San Diego, he's interested, he would wanna go, so that, anytime you have an employee that's hungry on their own to actually develop is awesome. And then your electronic flush valves, your entire jail is on pneumatic flush valves, meaning all of the individual cells, toilet sink showers that the inmates have, there are no water controls in place, and the inmate, I'm sure you guys deal with it here, some jails far worse, the inmates are shoving everything down the drain deliberately, from sheets to their tiles, they're blocking up the drain, the local cities and municipalities are overrun with electronic, it's a mess. Electron, one pneumatic flush valves are getting harder to get parts for, upgrading to electronic flush valves, now you control how many flushes the inmates get, after two flushes, it has to manually be reset by an employee, so in instances where they don't really feel good, you go and reset it, or you come in and half their sheet's sticking halfway out, no more pointing fingers. On paper documented benchmark throughout the state and even nationally, water savings start at forty percent and maximize at sixty, so I would naturally ask the auditor for the last three years of water used at the, at the jail, now, you know, you have your domestic hot water loop, there's other water that's being used, the kitchen, the laundry, but I would love to see three years of benchmark from your facility, and, and look at how much of this, by doing the electronic flush valves, you're cutting forty to sixty percent. So anyways, awesome things that I could actually document for you guys, I have no problem coming before the council, but your guys' assets are always out of sight, out of mind, everyone looks at new buildings, no one's looking at, hey, we've got these, and everything's always hitting you guys like a ton of bricks, what do you mean I need a four-hundred-thousand-dollar roof now? Well, I'm here with, as my firm's saying, here you go, da, 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 and you're years ahead of it, so let's plan for it, you guys do what you want, but I'm giving you the info and can price, even roughly price it, and then even bid it out successfully between multiple, and really get you some leverage savings.
Good.
That's that. Yeah, there's some issues at the jail, that, like I said, I'd like to have a...
Well, we know that.
Yep, a sidebar.
All that stuff.
Other than that, I have you a USB with both, secure PDFs, they're locked, you can read them, you can't edit them, master copy is the, I should've put a different cover with both, but the much thicker one is for you guys, otherwise, it's the sheriff and the courthouse. So we're going live then July first, August first, we'll have our first round of inspections done, so it may take two or three months of tweaking, what works, what doesn't work, do you guys want questions added to it, removed, are they too long, are they short, this is fully customized, I can do whatever you guys want in this area, but...
Okay.
Yeah.
Is this copiable? Can I make a copy of that?
The, the documents?
No, the, the flash drive.
Yeah, whatever.
I may copy this, it's not protected.
The flash drive's yours, but the two, the only thing on that flash drive are those documents, as PDFs.
All I'm saying, if I wanted to have more than one flash drive, I can copy this, okay?
Oh yeah, that's not, the PDFs are secure, the USB's open.
I wanna make sure it wasn't open.
So anyways, yeah, unless you guys, questions?
Having one of anything, like, nervous, I'll have two of those.
Yeah, no, no, I, and I have like five different external stor, I've got everything, don't worry about that.
Appreciate you, Matt, thanks.
Yeah, so, do you have any questions, anything for me to work?
I appreciate it.
I'll get with you, I'll give you a call next week, so we can get and go through some of the issues that we talked, talked about that, we need to be aware of before we go.
Yeah, and just let the council know that I did, I meet up with you guys, and on the fiscal side, for them to be proactive, and that these are all pretty big expenses, and you don't want them hitting you out of nowhere.
Why, we have to.
Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate you.
Yes, sir, I thank you for the business.
Alright, auditor report, sales disclosure?
Yes, on the sales disclosure, there is a new house bill that went into place, and household number twelve seventy-one, that takes place July the first of twenty twenty-one, our sales disclosure fees will now be twenty dollars instead of ten dollars.
Okay.
So I just want everybody to be aware of when they bring in their deeds.
That's nothing we have to prove or anything, that's just what it is, yeah.
And we know that this is taking place.
Does that money still go to the dedicated fund?
Pardon?
Does that still go to the dedicated fund?
Yes, does go to dedicated fund.
Or that's what we used to do, they changed that law, so...
Goes into dedicated fund, and then at some time I do the reimbursement back to state.
Okay, next up, we have a, the reporter from Thrive, West Central's local match budget request, Thrive is what was West Central Economic Development District in previous years, it's become a much more active organization, I'm president at that, actually, at the moment, and they have a budget request here, which is about seven thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars higher than the last year's, doing more, and they have them highlighted here, what those additional are for, one of the largest one here is transportation planning program, and so we need to decide if we're okay with the increase, if we wanna question the increase, and then either approve or not approve, if we approve, we need to send that on then to the, to the council for their approval. So I, this is the first I've seen this, as far as being broken out, even as president, I've not seen this broken out, we're meeting with them Friday to go over some of the same with some of the council as well, so I would, I would suggest that we table this, and so next week, give a chance to go through it and look at it and see, is that okay with you?
Yeah.
So we're gonna, we're gonna table Thrive request for the budget increase. Then we have requests from Purdue for their post machine leader agreement, have you seen that?
Yeah, there's a couple things I wanted to point out to you. It is non-cancelable for the twelve-month period, it's extending, after that, it renews automatically month to month, you have to get thirty days notice to terminate it.
Month repayers, thirty-one dollars, forty-nine cents, is what I see.
Everybody's switching to these automatic renewal contracts, month to month things.
So you're okay with it?
Yeah, I mean, as long as we're okay for the twelve-month period, thirty-one forty-nine.
I am, to me, that's, that's what they do, that's not what we do, we hired to do that service, so that's what they need, agreement, that, be that service, I don't agree with that.
What they use out there right now, to be honest with you, but if Purdue's going this way, with all the extension offices and...
They're, they're currently using a postage meter also, they're just extending their agreement, it's what they're wanting to do, they're wanting to stay with what they have.
It's a same company they already have, okay.
Yep, it's just locks it in for the year.
Okay, I'll make a motion if we go ahead and approve the postage meter agreement with the extension office?
And I would second that, all fair say hi.
You wanna sign this one, Jim?
Okay. Alright, then we have a notification about the driver's claim ongoing, we do have one we need to talk about, I don't see that here.
I had the driver's claim, but I forgot to make a copy of that.
Oh, okay, I see, I didn't see it talked for. You're aware what that is? It's none of those where, oh, sheriff deputies, we're calling already, it's with Mr. Little at the sheriff's, sheriff assuming federal.
Oh, yeah, I did see that.
And they recommend this, it costs so much, five thousand dollars, which is cheaper than fighting in court should we lose, but here we go again, of just signing a five thousand dollars for somebody for, for nothing that we do, so do you think we should pay that five thousand, or should we fight this one?
It's a financial decision to be made.
And I can tell you, Amy called me today, she's doing, filling out this report that a lawyer has sent, Justin, so she's getting...
I'd like to see that before they send it back.
Okay. Do you know if I heard not to send that back, because our attorney get a chance to wait that?
Yeah, 'cause I didn't know they'd send anything out there, so...
I suppose you recommended we hold up, pay the five thousand bucks.
Well, so I don't know enough about the case to really tell you whether you should pay it or not, but if they can give me information on the case, I can look at it, and I did briefly see that email come through.
This email just says that they actually presented a demand of thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars.
I don't know what the facts of the case are either, there'd be something you would even look at, we just kind of...
Discussing the claim with our defense.
That's a money case, not a legal case.
Yeah, I, I'd need to know more to...
You want to table that then, or...
Yeah, if you can, and as long as that's not gonna hurt them in any way.
I make that motion, we table that, until we get some advice from our attorney.
See, I don't see anything in this email that gives any kind of...
Is that the one I S T C done, or is that a separate one?
I don't see any kind of data that we needed to respond back, or anything like that, so I'd say, second to, table it.
Say hi. We will second it, you table that next meeting, we'll get some information from our attorney, get on that, lead the case. Okay, we will second it to table that next meeting, we'll get some information from our attorney then on that, with the, of the case. All right, old business, about the ACH payments, Laura had asked us last week, I know some counties have made the change. Um, we've not had any guidance, so we asked for guidance from the state, and, and Bruce, I know, was, uh, not comfortable with, uh, with, uh, not having that check trail. So, uh, I don't think we have any support for going ACH ahead and tell them, 'cause we must say anything where they said it's okay to do that, that's my understanding, right, Bruce, you must say anything?
Well, it's legally, it's okay, but, uh, I talked to, to a number of, of, members of the current state board of the council, and even my experience when I was there, and Laura had sent us a, a number of things that Misty had, uh, sent her, and, and, it says right in here, this is board of the council's language, it says right in here, we would recommend not setting up an automated monthly payment. I mean, board of the council is saying, we do not support this, we do not think that this should be legally, can we do it?
Yes.
Right. But, uh, I'm old school, uh, that's just the way, and one of these days, the generation Xers will take over, and everything will be electronic, everything, they'll be paying on their phones and stuff like that. And I get that, uh, but I'm an old timer and I, and I'm old school. Uh, there are a lot of problems with this, not only from an audit perspective, and board of council tell you this, they don't like it because they can't, uh, they don't have the documentation that they need,
We have Android editing.
To sampling, uh, for their testing. Um, you're opening up risks, again, I don't know if there's risk with anything, but you're opening up risks that, uh, someone has your bank account and they can start taking money out of your account, uh, even though you haven't authorized them to take it out. Uh, it's just, uh, I just don't think it's, it's where we need to go. Yes, it saves some money postage-wise, it saves some money envelope-wise, it maybe would save your staff some time. Um, but I, I, I just think the risk outweighed the benefits.
Not much, it's scheming things.
And, and the big picture, not, not, not much at all. And, and again, I have to go back to, the board of council says right here, and it's highlighted in yellow.
Yeah, 'cause we don't automatically, we don't have, we don't set up automatically, they send us the bills and then we would just do an ACH like you do,
Still, it's the same type, the same type of, of thing, so I just, I can't support going, uh, AHS, ACH payment at this point.
We, we just need some more, I think, guidance on this, but the difference is, they don't just go in and get it and take, take it out. She has to okay it, it's like writing checks, so.
Like, exactly. We know that they are computer scams all the,
But the thing for me, as it was for you, this is state board of council saying, we would recommend not doing that. So until they tell us they recommend doing it, I think we ought to stay with the knowledge. I, I hate making,
That's fine.
More work than maybe would be necessary, but until they say, we, we need to go to do this, and then, I think we ought to go with them.
One of the other things is it's hard to undo it once the money's sent.
It is.
Once you've sent it, it's hard to get that money back.
Okay, all right, maybe that'll come up again, um, Sheriff's not here today, Randy. I was out at the bridge on 100 today, I see it's steel floor and, what's, what's, what's the steps on that, what, what happened now?
Putting the stone on it.
Oh, it's just stone on it, okay, I didn't know what it was. Okay, you know, what's that then?
Sometimes you use asphalt, that's true, three, they use stone, they don't have roads anyhow.
Okay, looks good.
Hopefully we'll get that on tomorrow.
Oh, wonderful, that'd be great.
I think they should be ready to do that tomorrow.
Okay, good. It's a corrugated steel floor on the, on this bridge, it's just big rippled steel.
I'm sure they have corrugations of that, something like that.
It's not just covered with the material draft process, because it looks, it looks already go, super, chat.
Well, I have a couple of cycle checks. One is for milestone, finishment of contract paving, $354,605.32. And the other ones for VS engineering on bridge inspections, uh, $16,229.84.
Okay, all right, make a motion, we approve our cycle checks, one, the milestone, the amount of $354,605.32. And one to VS engineering for bridge inspections, an amount of $163,200 and,
Twenty-nine?
$16,229.84.
And I'll second that.
All fair chat.
Use $10.
Did you go back to you, Randy, or to Laura?
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you. The next thing I have is a, a MINDOT, very wanting commissioners, information, are there first and last names, email and cell phone, for that, uh, uh, doc you signed?
Oh yeah, okay.
Cell phone, wouldn't mind.
Yeah, it's fine.
Give me those.
They all want to plug that too, okay?
Yeah, 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 I was gonna say.
Anybody contracted for the roof on Sunset Smith Bridge?
Uh, yeah. Called, cut the homage, I haven't heard back.
Okay, good. Hope you get that done for festival, there'll be a lot of people.
Is that the one down by Mace?
And on the other?
That, okay.
Name what?
What's the one over by Mace?
Uh, Callum Ford.
Someone had told me the roof was off there too.
Yes, that 103P.
And I pulled it in, they was gonna go look at it, but I didn't have the data.
Yes, sir, yeah, you get this bridge, uh,
Why didn't open, were aware of that one had, uh, Did you get a chance to go to 600 today?
Uh-huh.
Okay, a lot of, a lot of mud on the roofs, it's, I don't know what it takes to power, suppose about all of it.
I don't agree, no, I don't know, they opened it all in prime city maps.
Okay. That would be pretty tough to get at night, you know, there.
You making a mess? Yeah, I put my home phone in, it's so small. I don't like clients to have my cell phone on my roof.
Ooh, that's mad.
And so they forgot my home phone on my roof, but. That is gonna tarnish it in my call hours. Thank you.
Yep.
And the other thing, you got taxes on the regular again.
How'd we get that worked out last time?
Well, we, we paid it, we paid it, I was gonna say.
Don't pay it.
Don't pay it? Okay. There's instructions from the, for the attorney, don't pay it.
Not yet anyway.
Okay.
I think we might be able to do something by resolutions to take care of that.
Okay.
Get our last year's money back?
That might be a little tougher.
And I thought there's, um, information bulletins from Department of Revenue that talks about this.
There is. Actually, I have them printed, they're just not with me today.
Okay. What else do you have?
I think that's it, if you guys have anything for me.
No, I had that one bridge, that, that someone had called me about. And I said I'd told Bailey, he said I'll run down by there since he's down in that area.
That's all I got, all right, well, thanks, sir.
You guys have a good evening.
All right, thanks, Randy.
And I do have a card from Highway Department.
From the Highway Department, signed by the full set, the Highway Department. Says, uh, thank you for everything, your thoughtfulness was appreciated more than you know. What that's referring to, I'm sure, um, last, um, week, or just last week?
Yes, last week.
Um, we had a, I call it actually, a special road commission meeting, which involved, uh, some commissioners, some council members, Randy. Um, I had done a study and asked Randy to record numbers for me, uh, of surrounding areas as far as pay. We're having a difficult time getting, uh, getting drivers for the Highway Department. And the reason, may not be the only reason, but certainly one of the reasons was, we, we were so drastically, uh, lower paid than the surrounding, the surrounding counties, their average, not counting Mego County, not counting, uh, Plutton County, we, we can't afford what Mego and what Plutton can do, um, just the ones our size, clay, fountain, vermeil. Uh, the average there was eighteen and six dollars and six cents an hour. Uh, we start our drivers off at fifteen something, and they get up to sixteen, eventually, still, that's two dollars below. So my request to the council was, to, uh, to the commission was, and the, the road commission agreed, and of course, we don't make any decisions, however, they agreed with the consensus, and then I took, then to a commission meeting we held, immediately after the road commission meeting, special commissioner meeting, commissioners agreed and approved then, to take to the council the request to raise the, um, pay scale for the Highway Department. And the numbers in the paper weren't exactly right, I was gonna call, I, I need you here today. It's nineteen dollars for the foreman, it's eighteen dollars for CDL, if you have a CDL, it's eighteen dollars. Seventeen dollars if you do not have a CDL, and twelve dollars for the part-time seasonal, uh, not part-time, the seasonal help, is that right?
Fifteen.
Was it fifteen? Fifteen, okay, fifteen. So those are the numbers, nineteen for the foreman, eighteen for CDL, seventeen for non-CDL, and fifteen, what's fifteen? Can we talk about how you get that going to Burger King? 20's digs, okay, uh, and then it was, and of course, everybody's underpaid, we understand that. But for these guys, for this, this, these positions, uh, you have to have a special license, and you gotta have special training, and you gotta have experience, and you're out there driving that truck, which is a whole lot different than most other jobs that we, we do. It's like the sheriff's pay is different than other people's, and the ambulance service is different pay than other people's, and people have different jobs, different responsibilities. I wish we had enough to give everybody 25 bucks an hour for what they do, but we don't have, so we have to make those choices as we go. So this seemed to be negatively impacting us, we are down, I think, seven people? Seven people, the Highway Department, and it's not because we're firing people, and it's not because we're not, uh, acting on applications, we're not even getting applications for those positions, so we're gonna have to do some things to get people. People aren't what their roofs fix, they're gonna want snow plow in the wintertime, we're gonna have to have people in those seats to do that. So if this is what it takes to help that process, then there we are. But it's gonna be tough, the, uh, right by my house, the sign right there by the state highway, they're paying 20 bucks an hour to straw, but 20 bucks an hour, so, that's what we eat with.
Yeah, that's for non-CDL.
That's for non-CDL, it is?
CDL was 21.
Yeah, that's just coming off the, one, one of our truck drivers who left, went from making 16 bucks an hour to drive on a regular schedule for a guy company, they just drive your truck, move your truck, and it's making 28 dollars an hour, so how do you, how do you fight that? How, how do you do that, you know, so? It's obviously not all money, it's not all the station, but this could be a part of it, so. Um, well, see, this makes a difference, and as I said in the, in the council meeting, I hope to find out, uh, studies of all the positions for all the counties, there's no reason for us to be at the bottom of anything. I don't expect us to be the highest paid, but I don't expect us to be the lowest paid either, I think we need to be in the average someplace, so we need to find out what that is and, and seek that. Uh, we have done that before, we found out with some of our positions, we're actually higher paid than some, and, uh, so we just need to, you look, ascertain the proper way to go, so. We're working on it, we're trying, anybody got anything else, Sydney, anything?
I just wanted to echo on the not getting applications, not getting people. Um, I do hope the change in pay helps Randy, you know, get applications, I can't tell you from all the businesses I've talked to, no one's getting applications.
Right.
It's not necessarily pay-related, um,
I give you a personal.
They don't have the bodies.
Yes. Personal opinion on this is legislation was tried to pass to make it 15 dollar minimum wage, that was a hope, that legislation failed. And I believe those in power at the moment have the idea that, uh, they will, uh, if they can regulate and limit the amount of available labor, that labor shortage just simply from supply and demand will drive that wage up. And so I think paying 300 bucks an extra for people who are not working is gonna make those people stay home, we have a labor shortage. So we're gonna have to force wages up, once wages get where they wanted, and they could not do with legislation, they will pull that 300 bucks, and the people will be getting it off, but they'll be at that 15 dollar level that they wanted all along, so. Some states have decided not to continue with that 300, I think Indiana is one of those, I think, that is, it's not continuing.
He's got sued too.
So we'll see how that goes, but that is, that is not by accident, that, that is not, just happened that way, that was a planned process of creating, in my mind, a planned process of creating a false labor shortage in order to drive the price up to get that minimum wage where they wanted to be, so, there we are.
But unfortunately, as you said,
Nobody.
Nobody, I mean, you, even in small town Rockville, you can go to almost any business, anywhere intact.
You can drive anywhere, CDL.
And they're looking for, they're looking for people, and, and the same way in Terre Haute, and you go through Terre Haute, and everybody's got help on the signs.
Can we take that 300 bucks a week extra and give it to the people who are working, or the ones who aren't working? And you'll see those people looking for jobs a lot quicker than they are at the moment.
I saw our, the states that previously already opted out of the 300, we're seeing their work rate increase, and unemployment claims decrease. And that just came out recently.
There were 10 at one time, I'm happy there are now, that, that, John, man, you, you know, how many states have, about?
About half.
Okay, all right, so we'll get there, it's just, it's what it says, it's just,
It's swinging back the other way, once they take that away, but.
Indiana stopped this week, this week, this one.
Politics.
This was Texas they were talking about, had our swung back the other way.
Anybody got anything for the good cause? Thanks for being here.
I break the book?
All right, I'll send that, we're done.